Okay, we apologize for the delay. Our communications director's been here. The staff has been working on this problem and it's not fixable currently. We are going to be recording, so when we do have speakers, we'll ask that, I guess, that you just speak loud. And we'll see what happens here. So at this point, we would like to invite Ms. Webster to come back up to the podium. And we'll give you another period of time during the break. I understand from the speaker that there's an additional document that she would like to distribute to staff and to the planning commission. And we'll collect all this information. So we'll give you a few more minutes to explain this and then we'll determine our pathway to move forward on your issue.
Again, my name is Cherry Webster. I live at 118 Country Bluff Drive. And the document that Joel is passing out now is the document that I referenced earlier about the developers' attempt to hide what he was doing, circumvent the rules, and game the system on the land disturbance side. And then we're seeing that again now with the zoning side of the project. But to summarize, this whole project has... It's a case study. How not to annex a property, how not to rezone a property, how to drag your feet on updating the city code, how to not enforce a land disturbance permit, how to define undergoing development. We can't get a straight answer out of the director of planning. We get conflict after conflict. Our main issue is correcting the existing problem of no detention bond, no filter basin, and an inadequate buffer. And then secondly, to prevent these types of problems from occurring again. And the only way that that's going to be fixed is if you change the annexation criteria in the city code. On August 27th, three of our members from Country Bluff met with the director of planning for two hours. And the first response from the planning director was, "We don't need to change the code. You just need not to annex this kind of a property in again." And he made the statement that the 52-acre parcel founds on Fall Creek shouldn't never have been annexed in at all because it was out of compliance. Well, what was it out of compliance with? Well, it was out of compliance with the DNR SWIP. The developer just decided to pick and choose which elements of the SWIP he would and wouldn't construct. It was out of compliance with the Public Works, Public Improvements Design Criteria on the storm drainage design standards. And so if it was out of compliance on August 27th, 2021, it was probably out of compliance on May 12th, 2020. But when I went back and listened to that second reading of the annexation, the director of planning stated, "No, I don't have any updates other than the fact that we just got a letter today from the DNR stating that the property was in compliance." But that's in compliance with the sediment-filled stormwater, not the sediment-free stormwater, which is your flow velocity, which we've been dealing with for the last 18 months. So clearly, there needs to be additional annexation criteria. We've made proposed changes. There's nothing on the planning commission agenda for that this month. Hopefully, there will be next month. The land disturbance permit was... I don't know if I can address that or not. I can't. Okay, so we'll just stick with the zoning.
That's a different issue.
We'll just stick with the zoning. I would still like the answers to the zoning questions. I'd like an example of a precedent in Christian and Green Counties and how those properties were zoned by way of an annexation plan intent into the city of Ozark, the city republic. I'd still like an answer.
I think you listed that in your presentation. So, okay, let's wrap it up.
When we get those answers tonight?
Please wrap it up.
Okay. I'll stop there. If there are any other questions that anybody has, I'll be glad to answer them.
Ms. Cherry, I just got a comment. And I guess my line of questioning with Ms. Cherry was just to highlight those particular things and leading into, obviously, there's issue and there's questions. Is there any way to have that formally addressed by staff or the aldermen? That, you know, some reports done that can be presented to the community and to this board and to the Board of Aldermen? So we can kind of start cleaning up this mess? Because obviously, there is a substantial issue there. And we need to find out where those boundaries are and not just throw, "Oh, it's not our problem." I think it needs to be outlined, identified. And, you know, there needs to be some common ground on all this because our citizens are the most important people in this community. And to just outright say, "Oh, it's not our problem. Get your own attorney." I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to somehow figure out, like, where does it lie? How can we help? Not, "It's your problem." How can we help? Like, we're all in this together. We all live in Branson, Missouri. And I think that's where we need to come to common ground on this. So if there's a way that staff and the Board of Aldermen can compile that, to present that to these people and outline a solution for them, I think we could, you know, we could come together and have, I won't say joyous meetings, but at least some community fellowship in this.
Okay, appreciate your comment. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Let me make a comment. And that is that, you know, we deal with zoning. And when you deal with zoning, you're dealing with the use. And the real authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission, in terms of zoning, is to determine use. Most all of the other issues that you're bringing up, we really... And we're going to have training later tonight. And we're probably going to discover that we really can't hinge our zoning decisions on most any of these things that now are bothersome, whether it's land clearing, storm water, or any other issues. So we have to determine annexation based upon limited factors. And so to expect this commission to hinge decisions on issues that aren't legally connected to the aspect of zoning is not within our capability. On the other hand, once a property is zoned and is brought into the city and then begins to pass through that funk-
Okay, we apologize for the delay. Our communications director's been here. The staff has been working on this problem and it's not fixable currently. We are going to be recording, so when we do have speakers, we'll ask that, I guess, that you just speak loud. And we'll see what happens here. So at this point, we would like to invite Ms. Webster to come back up to the podium. And we'll give you another period of time during the break. I understand from the speaker that there's an additional document that she would like to distribute to staff and to the planning commission. And we'll collect all this information. So we'll give you a few more minutes to explain this and then we'll determine our pathway to move forward on your issue.
Again, my name is Cherry Webster. I live at 118 Country Bluff Drive. And the document that Joel is passing out now is the document that I referenced earlier about the developers' attempt to hide what he was doing, circumvent the rules, and game the system on the land disturbance side. And then we're seeing that again now with the zoning side of the project. But to summarize, this whole project has... It's a case study, how not to annex a property, how not to rezone a property, how to drag your feet on updating the city code, how to not enforce a land disturbance permit, how to define undergoing development. We can't get a straight answer out of the director of planning. We get conflict after conflict. Our main issue is correcting the existing problem of no detention bond, no filter basin, and an inadequate buffer. And then secondly, to prevent these types of problems from occurring again. And the only way that that's going to be fixed is if you change the annexation criteria in the city code. On August 27th, three of our members from Country Bluff met with the director of planning for two hours. And the first response from the planning director was, "We don't need to change the code. You just need not to annex this kind of a property in again." And he made the statement that the 52-acre parcel found on Fall Creek shouldn't never have been annexed in at all because it was out of compliance. Well, what was it out of compliance with? Well, it was out of compliance with the DNR SWIP. The developer just decided to pick and choose which elements of the SWIP he would and wouldn't construct. It was out of compliance with the Public Works, Public Improvements Design Criteria on the storm drainage design standards. And so if it was out of compliance on August 27th, 2021, it was probably out of compliance on May 12th, 2020. But when I went back and listened to that second reading of the annexation, the director of planning stated, "No, I don't have any updates other than the fact that we just got a letter today from the DNR stating that the property was in compliance." But that's in compliance with the sediment-filled stormwater, not the sediment-free stormwater, which is your flow velocity, which we've been dealing with for the last 18 months. So clearly, there needs to be additional annexation criteria. We've made proposed changes. There's nothing on the planning commission agenda for that this month. Hopefully, there will be next month. The land disturbance permit was... I don't know if I can address that or not. I can't, okay, so we'll just stick with the zoning.
That's a different issue.
We'll just stick with the zoning. I would still like the answers to the zoning questions. I'd like an example of a precedent in Christian and Green Counties and how those properties were zoned by way of an annexation plan intent into the city of Ozark, the city of Republic. I'd still like an answer.
I think you've listed that in your presentation. So, okay, let's wrap it up.
Will we get those answers tonight?
Please wrap it up.
Okay. I'll stop there. If there are any other questions that anybody has, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, a second comment. And I guess my line of questioning with Ms. Cherry was just to highlight those particular things and leading into, obviously, there's issue and there's questions. Is there any way to have that formally addressed by staff or the aldermen that, you know, some reports done that can be presented to the community and to this board and to the Board of Aldermen? So we can kind of start cleaning up this mess because, obviously, there is a substantial issue there. And we need to find out where those boundaries are and not just throw, "Oh, it's not our problem." I think it needs to be outlined, identified. And, you know, there needs to be some common ground on all this because our citizens are the most important people in this community. And to just outright say, "Oh, it's not our problem, get your own attorney." I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to somehow figure out, like, where does it lie? How can we help? Not, "It's your problem," but how can we help? Like, we're all in this together. We all live in Branson, Missouri. And I think that's where we need to come to common ground on this. So if there's a way that staff and the Board of Aldermen can compile that, to present that to these people and outline a solution for them, I think we could, you know, we could come together and have, I won't say joyous meetings, but at least some community fellowship in this.
Okay, appreciate your comment. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Let me make a comment. And that is that, you know, we deal with zoning. And when you deal with zoning, you're dealing with the use. And the real authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission, in terms of zoning, is to determine use. Most all of the other issues that you're bringing up, we really... And we're going to have training later tonight. And we're probably going to discover that we really can't hinge our zoning decisions on most any of these things that now are bothersome, whether it's land clearing, storm water, or any other issues. So we have to determine annexation based upon limited factors. And so to expect this commission to hinge decisions on issues that aren't legally connected to the aspect of zoning is not within our capability. On the other hand, once a property is zoned and is brought into the city and then begins to pass through that somewhat long process of developing into a project with buildings on it that meet development codes, building codes, stormwater codes, that's when the process then unfolds. That's when the buffers come in. That's when the stormwater comes in. We find ourselves in a situation here whereby, and I don't disagree, it would have been better for this body had the annexation proposal come through us. It didn't. It went to the Board of Aldermen. My personal belief is they have every right, if they wish, as a government body, to zone. That's who zones. We recommend. They authorize zoning. So this particular situation we find ourselves in, I agree with Commissioner LeBlanc, needs some way to find folks that are more likely to be able to head us in the right direction. But it's not something that we can put a motion on our agenda and resolve these problems. So Commissioner Lloyd, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I do. I appreciate the input and the information that has been presented to us. And I want to make sure that this has all been heard and goes on record. And I too want to remind that we do not have this authority for what you're asking. This commission doesn't. But I would ask that it would be brought to the aldermen, to the mayor, to the administrator, and to our director of planning and zoning, and let them make a report back to us is what I would like to see happen. But we can't vote on it. We just recommend it.
Chairman Davis?
Yes, Alderwoman Denham.
As an older person, hearing all this information tonight, I don't really know how, if this has happened before at the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, I think it'd be... I don't know if Director Joel is going to pass this information on or my responsibility to make sure that the Board of Aldermen receive this information so that some discussion can take place.
That's a good point. As chairman, if you're in agreement, I would basically give you... Your role as an alderman in our commission is to report to the Board of Aldermen the proceedings that occurred here and to bring to us reports back from what occurred in the Board of Aldermen so that we can have that line of communication. So if it suits this body tonight, I would assign you that task of making sure that at your next meeting, you ask for an opportunity to make a report from Planning and Zoning and to present the information that was provided to us. It's staff should have it. And then set forth a plan that the aldermen, I want to see the administrators, report on it. And of course, our planning department's director on it. And legal, all four areas.
Yes, thank you. I'll do that and I will report back to this board.
With just a nod of agreement, Board of Aldermen or Board of Commission? Are you okay with that, Marshall? Everybody's in concurrence with that. So we'll ask Alderwoman Denham to take this issue up with a body that can actually help, maybe, help you get into the right spot. Did you have another question?
Yeah, I decided to ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Gail Westbrook. I live at 105 Country Bluff Court. I think Cherry's done a great job in presenting this information and I commend her efforts. And she is part of my community and I appreciate that. But there's a couple of things that I do want to mention that, just to add to what she has already presented to you. And it might be repetitive and such, but I won't take very much of that. We did meet with Mr. Joel Hornicle. And there was a couple of other residents and myself that met with him. And he graciously invited us to talk with him. And we talked a little bit about city ordinances and what's enforceable and what's unenforceable. And the red tape that has been created with the fact that we're kind of stuck in the middle here since this land that Mr. Ruto cleared in this parcel and was in the county and now in some city that they can't enforce anything until he does some active development. Well, that's all well and good when things are working well. But if things were, would have been in order when it was zoned and are annexed into the city. But that's not the case. So now, because we're caught in this red tape, we're dealing with this water runoff issue and the fact that residents within my community are getting flooded. And so, and I know that Cherry mentioned that. But still, I just want to drive home the point that something needs to change. And then Joel kind of educated us on the fact that we can't ask for rezoning of this parcel, you know, or re-annexation, I guess is the right word. But at any rate, because only the developer can do that. Well, what, did I understand that correctly? I mean, is that the case? So when we make a mistake, when a mistake has been clearly made, don't we go back and fix that? Don't we evaluate it and fix that mistake? I mean, that's what I'm hoping that I hear. And I know that the mayor is here and I do appreciate all your support. And we have written letters and we've done all these things. And we're going to continue to do these things until something changes because we can't let the citizens of our community get flooded for no good reason. I mean, it's ruining their property values. It's ruining the landscape. And it's just not right. Something needs to be done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please, welcome to the podium. Please state your name and address.
My name is Larry Milton, 8 Willow Court, Branson, Missouri.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. I'm looking for a possible solution. And I know I'm addressing the commission. But maybe if you could ask the ownership in Country Bluff Estates, what a possible solution might be. Because I've been hearing a lot, and we've all been hearing a lot. And my specific question would be, if the stormwater detention was put in and if there was a 50-foot buffer, would that make this issue, this immediate issue go away? Clearly, the commission, our legal aldermen, we need to address our zoning codes, for sure. And I know we're working on that currently. So I guess what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to seek a solution. Is there anything other than putting in stormwater detention in 50-foot buffer?
That's the base, that's what we want.
That's all I want. I will work on that, thank you.
Ruth, you got your marching orders there.
Yep.
Regarding the other thing that, as a commissioner, that this body would appreciate you work on, Mayor, while you're here to listen, is these sorts of problems are not new. I've sat on this commission for over 20 years and there's been a group of these sorts of bored, distraught folks in front of us many times. And it's for very same reasons. Stormwater runoff, loss of vegetation, our property values have been hurt. And this occurs largely because of the lack of jurisdictional authority outside of our city limits in an area that we don't have control over. Now, our planning and development codes are not perfect. Our people are not perfect. Mistakes can be made. But generally speaking, this sort of problem would not have occurred if the state of Missouri allowed cities of the fourth class and other cities to establish methods by which they can direct development adjacent to their infrastructures. This property is going to be on our sewer, going to be on our water. It's going to have streets. It's going to affect the flow of traffic on, you know, the whole list. So we need the board to be mindful of the planning and zoning's lack of authority and the Board of Aldermen's lack of authority due to the state and Missouri's approach to our type of situation. Springfield and Charter Cities and so forth, they have those authorities. At our level, we don't. So as an aside, please also consider that in your longer-range planning with your government advocacy work. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So we'll wait for the report to come back from Alderwoman Denham. And we'll make sure that it becomes... Joel, if you would take note, that that should be an item on a... And I'm not going to promise when. I don't have that authority. We'll put it on an item of old business at a future planning and zoning meeting. And it may very well show up on the Board of Aldermen. But we'll ask for it to at least come back here for the report. All right. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak to this group on an item that's not on our agenda? Okay, in that case, we are going to move on to the regular agenda. And I believe that at this point, the first item on that irregular agenda is to approve the minutes for both study session and regular meeting for August 3rd, 2021. And you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to. So Chair here a motion to approve a minutes? I have a motion and a second. Steph and Denham, for approval of the minutes. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Chairperson. Now, vote. Commissioner Steph?
Yes.
Commissioner Howden?
Yes.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairperson Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Denham?
Yes.
Both are closed. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then now we'll open the public hearing section of this night's agenda, September 7th. And this is a request for high-density residential zoning for property located at 705 Blue Meadows Road, Branson, Missouri. And we'll start with the staff report.
Mr. Chairperson, thank you so much. The owner for this request is Pyramid Properties LLC. The applicant being Mark Pyramid. As mentioned in the title, the applicant's request is to change the zoning of the property to high-density residential. It's currently zoned mixed-use. Here's an image of the property. As you can see, it's vacant, undeveloped. And we'll see some more detail in our vicinity maps on the following pages. The next slide being our aerial vicinity map. Just as I stated, showing, outlined in purple, the properties that are included in this request. It is a larger property to the south and then a smaller one to the north. So two properties there, outlined again in purple, that are undeveloped and wooded. You see a fair amount of cedar trees on both properties. Again, the property is in between Falls Parkway and Blue Meadows Road. Next vicinity map is the current zoning. Again, to make sure we're all focused in on the subject, properties outlined in purple. That color shows us that it's, as I mentioned earlier, mixed-use zoning. And you also see properties zoned the same to the south and to the west. And then we have community commercial properties to the west and to the north, high-density residential to the east, as well as planned development in the city towards the southeast. Properties zoned low-density residential in the yellow. The proposed zoning being high-density residential for these properties. And then we also include vicinity map showing the existing land. You see a fair amount of vacant properties in the area, which is the gray tone. You also see some commercial properties in the red, as well as lodging properties in the pink or salmon. And then we also have some high-density residential properties that are to the east in a mustard yellow. We also include orthometric views from all four cardinal directions in case we need them for our discussion or simply for reference. So getting into the details of the request itself, this property was annexed back in 1993 as part of the Falls property, which was an 80-acre parcel. It's obviously been subdivided over the years. So what's included in tonight's request is 4.65 acres of the original parcel. And as I've said multiple times, at this point, it's vacant, wooded, undeveloped. The proposed use is to construct self-storage units. The applicant actually has done just that on adjacent property that they already own to the northwest, which is behind another property that they own, which is a craft mall there on State Highway 165. The zoning change is... Or the reason for the zoning change is because the use that they're proposing in the self-storage units is not allowed in mixed-use. So it does take a zoning change to have that proposed use. Additionally, it would take especially use permit to get all the way to a self-storage unit within the high-density residential district. These parcels have been identified on the Community Plan 2030's Preferred Land Use Plan as being medium-density residential to simply highlight that the Community Plan 2030 only included two residential districts, the low and the medium. High-density was added to bridge the gap between the neighborhood commercially and the medium-density residential. Additionally, these properties have been identified in the Community Plan 2030's Growth Template as developmental. So that is a graphic that we included with your all-staff reports and posted on the website, that figure eight. Simply what that does is it looks at slopes of properties, adjacency to existing infrastructure, vegetation, and complementary uses. So again, highlight that these parcels have been identified for development. As a result, Steph recommends approval. After any, is there any questions you have? And unfortunately, our applicant was unable to join us this evening. So staff will do our very best to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report, Joel. I just had one, I guess, technical question. Did I see that there are actually three lots and two parcels here?
Yeah, yep, yep. So there are three lots technically, but the way that...
The way the legal came out, it was two different descriptions, is that it?
That's right, that's right. So yes, it does appear this throughout. So that is one thing we talked about the applicant with, that if they pursue this or any other uses, going through a minor subdivision process, that would remove those... Any question about those inherent proper lines? That way he has no setback concerns, that it would just become one of our...
Okay, all right, all right. So at this point, does the commission have any questions of staff regarding this request for zoning change on 705 Blue Meadows Road? Alderwoman Denham?
Thank you. Mr. Hornicle, on the application for this, the applicant has put in storage and cleaning. Can you please let us know what kind of cleaning business he's wanting to do here?
Where are you, Ruth?
Yes.
Zoning application?
Yes, I'm on the zoning application.
This is exhibit one for the staff report.
Proposed use of the property and...
Storage and cleaning property.
Yeah, so, you know, we're at the mercy of whatever the applicant's put down. But what we understand from that verbiage, as we've had conversations with the applicant, his first primary goal with the property is simply to clean it up. So he says clean the property, but he wants to underbrush. He's had a lot of pedestrian traffic through those properties. And he's simply trying to cut down on that and the homeless population in the area. So he simply wants to remove, brush, and clean up the property from that same point. But no cleaning business to speak of.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to go to paragraph four of the staff report. These properties are identified as medium-density residential in the Community Plan 2030. And medium residential, the density is six to 12 dwelling units per acre and the maximum height is 35. The request for a zoning change to high-density residential, staff says, staff recommends approval of this request based on the applicant's commitment to the community plan. High-density residential is actually doubled what medium is. That would take the density to 12 to 24 dwelling units per acre, which could actually be 111 units, and the maximum height at 75 feet. And the maximum height at 75 feet. So, the request is actually doubling height and density of what the property is actually identified as in the community plan. So, I just wanted to, to bring that, um, bring that up.
Right, so it was actually meant the opposite direction from how you just stated it. So, when working with the applicant, he first approached us, and what I'm gonna do is go back to the vicinity maps. So, his existing storage facility is on this property here, which is zoned community commercial. So, in his simple mind, he wanted to annex, or I'm sorry, to bring these properties, request a zoning change to community commercial. Um, and so, we talked with him because, again, his simple mind thought, I need a community commercial to do storage, and that's what I wanna do. So, what we talked with him about was looking at the Community Plan 2030 showing residential, looking at the adjacent uses mainly to the east of high-density residential and planned development. We, in, we, in working with him and talking with him, explained that the high-density residential would be more preferable based on the Community Plan 2030 and adjacent properties versus community commercial. So, so we were not comparing high-density to medium-density, we were comparing community commercial to high-density residential. So, as a result, high-density residential is preferred over community commercial. So, that, that's, that statement there is to, is committed to the community plan to pursue a residential zoning as opposed to a community commercial.
It would be helpful that the applicant could have been here to tell us about his intention of what he's going to do. But your point is well-taken, because, uh, it is a use change, a zoning change, so he can build to that level. If it were commercial, he could build to a whole bunch more. So... Other questions? Okay, uh, let's see, uh... Does that conclude, conclude your report then, Joel?
Yes.
Okay, is anyone here tonight in the onyx to speak, uh, regarding this issue, uh, at 705 Blue Meadows Road?
Hi, Larry Milton, A-Will of Gordon. I'm actually, Alderman Denham addressed what jumped out at me on this. The property is currently zoned medium-density residential?
No, sir, the property is currently zoned mixed use.
Mixed use?
Yes.
And so, taking it to high-density residential will still require a special use permit for the storage units.
That's correct.
So, the question I was gonna raise was, um, I know Mark Pearlman, straight-up guy. As long as Mark owns a property, property, there's no issue. Um, I was just looking down the road, when Mark does sell it, then the property is zoned high-density. And so, my question would be, uh, is there a... Could they get a special use permit for self-storage under its current zoning?
They could not, mixed use does not allow an opportunity for self-storage at all. So, the only opportunities for self-storage are community commercial as an allowed use or permitted use, or under high-density residential with a special use. And when you look at the development standards from mixed use to high-density residential, the density requirements are identical, a- as well as all of the other developmental standards. So, it's a lateral move in terms of if it were to be built out with multifamily dwellings or two-family dwellings or single-family dwellings. It's a lateral move, if anything. What this change in zoning would do is it completely removed any opportunity for commercial development within these parcels. Um, it would only allow residential development or some limited commercial, but with a special use permit.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, Joel.
You're welcome.
Um, the two streets, Blue Meadows and Fall Creek?
Parkway.
Um, Fall Creek can handle more traffic?
Falls Parkway?
I mean, Falls Parkway, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, do you know which way the property will be?
That probably we don't get into at this point unless you, you have the applicant here to tell us if he's gonna orient the driveway out. Although, uh, you do have to establish the front of the building. And do you have, uh, your development codes in mind while I'm at the answer that question?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, with self-storage, I mean, the whole reason we require a special use permit is when it's a high-density residential, is that the applicant has to come before the planning commission and the public and basically lay out their site plan and say, here it is, any concerns? But, um, we do have supplementary use standards for self-storage on top of anything that this can, the commission maybe imposes a condition on the development. Um, and that's based on the orientation of the buildings, that garages can't be seen from the street. Given that it is along two roads, there would be landscaping requirements down both sides of those roads. So, there, there's quite a few development codes that if he were to pursue that use in addition to the special use, that would, um, obviously make sure it's not having a negative impact on surrounding property. Thank you very much, all I have.
Thank you for your, uh, inquisition. Uh, yes, I'd also re-empify the observation on the map in staff's explanation that, uh, from a planning standpoint, uh, high-density is, uh, adjacent to and essentially, uh, most consistent with this, uh, with this request. Other commissioners have questions, if staff? Anyone else here to talk about this issue tonight?
I have to think that's out of you.
Brian Denham, 338 Bramble Lane, Branson, Missouri. I actually know Mark also. He is a stand-up guy. My concerns are with the high-density. And Joel just admitted he's not really gonna do anything with this property right now, but making it high-density. And, uh, what could we have in the future if he decided to sell it to an unscrupulous builder? And you know, they're, they're tired. And, uh, also, he owns this property right now. And on Blue Meadows, you can't even hardly get by this property, it's not maintained at all. So, I'm asking, do you have to have, uh, the rezoning to clean the property?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought it might have been some, some kind of a, uh, reason for that. I mean, it's really, you would think the city would do something about it too, but, uh, it's pretty much a hazard. And that, my concerns are that it's the high-density I'm really un, un, uncomfortable with just by seeing some of the other things that have happened around here with high-density. And, uh, well, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. The, uh, amount of high-density that could go on parcels of land like this are also limited by setbacks and requirements that would, uh, uh, require onsite parking, uh, would require, uh, front-street setback, back-street setback. And so, uh, it, it's not like it could be built, uh, you know, border-to-border with those, uh, tall buildings. So, the size of the, of the parcels that we're talking about, uh, don't lend themselves to skyscrapers. So, uh, just from a simple common sense approach, we're talking about a relatively small area of land. And usage, uh, adjacent to it, uh, being consistent with the higher density, does allow this applicant to achieve what he's intending to achieve, and we believe it to be storage. He's not here to tell us that, so we have to go on Joel's opinion, but, uh, it's, that's unfortunate, we don't have the applicant here. Where do you reside?
Uh, Bramble Lane.
Wh- where is that on the map?
It's about a block down.
Okay, yeah.
But, uh-
And that, and the, and the, the street there that you say is poorly maintained?
Right here, with the jog is in the corner, all that from, from the hotel on the corner.
Yeah.
From the hotel on the corner.
Gotcha.
All of that property that he owns is not maintained.
Not maintained.
And it's, and it's, there's been people that have been complaining about it and calling about it, and we're not getting any restitution on this.
Okay.
And we, we, I mean, is this the way it's gonna be maintained in the future? I, I've seen his other properties, and they're very well-maintained. This is a hazard for the community, because we get semis coming through here. And I can just imagine there probably be more, because, uh, when you get on Google or any maps, they take you right through our subdivision.
To deliver.
I have a neighbor that a semi went through, tried to make the corner, it's not set up for semis. Took out the stop sign and a bunch of plants right on the corner.
Right.
Uh, we have another, there was a wreck on the street also. Uh, because of the overgrowth, they couldn't see if anybody was coming, and they, they have, they had a wreck right there. And went right through the neighbor's fence. So, we're really concerned about it.
While we, you know, while we can't hinge, uh, maintaining property to a zoning request, the, the issue has been brought forth in this meeting. I'm assuming staff has heard this, and, uh, at the right point in time will inquire about who's gonna maintain this. Why does the city, does the city do it, does the applicant have to do it, or who's not maintaining it? You wanna speak?
Mr. Chairperson, so the applicant just, uh, obtained this property mid-July. So, he's only had it under his ownership for the last month and a half.
Okay.
Um, and working with Mr. Pyramid for quite a long time, since he pursued the storage units there, uh, to the northwest of this property, he, he has always been one of concern of what's been happening on all those properties to the east. These two properties, as well as the, the old hotels to the north. Um, and he has been, since that time, ever pursuing the purchase of those properties, so he could clean up and, and get some of these things addressed, 'cause he shared the same concerns, um, with the city. So, we will definitely let coenforcement know to, to put it on their radar, to go check the property out. As a vacant property, code requires him to, to maintain the first five feet of his property along the right-of-way. So, that is absolutely requirement of, of any property owner to do that, um, vacant properties. So, we'll work with coenforcement to get that in. Thank you very much.
Sounds like he might be a good neighbor.
Mr. Chairperson, so-
Yes, Commissioner Steph.
Thank you. Joel, did you say that he already has storage units?
Yeah, so-
And which, is it one, which property is it?
Uh, so, going back to our vicinity map with an aerial, so, so this is the applicant's property, the craft mall. And then just directly behind it, uh, these are his storage units that he built, uh, probably three years ago, I'd say.
Okay.
Um, and so, he has been wildly successful with the storage units. He continues to get requests, and he's looking to essentially expand that operation. And he's had a lot of inquiry about outdoor storage. Again, code has several requirements about outdoor storage and, and how that needs to be handled on a property. And so, that is the interest he's expressed to us.
Could you go back to the color map?
Yep.
So, if that current property he's got is already zoned, is zoned now community commercial, why wouldn't he want that same zoning for those two parcels that we're talking about?
Mixed use.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, mi- mixed use.
Okay, the red is mixed use?
The red is-
His, his existing property is zoned community commercial, that's the red.
Yeah, right.
And then these are zoned mixed use.
Right, but he wants to change it to high-density residential?
Correct, so, mixed use does not offer any opportunity for self-storage. His only options would be community commercial or high-density residential. Again, staff, based on all of our information, um, at our disposal, believe it's in the community's better interest for these properties to be zoned high-density residential as opposed to community commercial for this use.
Then why didn't staff wanna zone the existing storage property that he has?
It, it was already, it was zoned already, the commercial.
Okay, I guess, I don't know, are you kind of, I'm just, I'm devil's advocate with you, right?
We're, we're trying to, we're trying to prevent commercial from encroaching on the established residential area to the east. That, that is really the goal of the high-density residential versus community commercial. Because if, if, and then that completely would be contradictory to Community Plan 2030 to have a commercially-zoned property where it laid out to be residential. So, this is, this is actually a move in the right direction, um, on the district lineup from mixed-use district, which allows commercial opportunities, as well as residential opportunities, to solely residential opportunities.
But it's not gonna be used for residential, it's gonna be used for commercial.
Right, with a special use permit.
You see what I'm saying? I mean, I, I get what you're saying.
So, so, I guess, if I could just, sorry that-
Sure, that's, no, that's okay.
If I could just go, again, the opposite direction of community commercial, if, if that, if that was what he proposed, and he decided to walk away from the property, or if somebody approached him a month after he got his own community commercial and said, I'll buy this for X, Y, and Z. And he's like, wow, that's a great deal, yeah, sure, here you go.
Yeah.
Um, and then, it, who knows, it could be, I mean, gas stations, go on and on and on about all the opportunities that community commercial allows as permitted use. So, this vastly decreases that list by going this direction, as opposed to the community commercial.
Okay, so the, the only risk, so to speak, would be if he decides not to do his storage units and decides, and gets the property rezoned to high-density residential, and then sells the property to a developer who could put some high-density buildings-
Again, I would say that this, this request is actually lessening the risk of commercial development on that property.
Yeah, I got it. But so, but my, what I just said is, so the only risk then for people concerned about it is that if he were to buy it, or he owns it, he's to rezone it and then decide not to do his storage facilities, maybe his financial situation changes, sells the property, it's now zoned high-density residential, someone else could come in and buy it and build high-density units.
But again, I would say there's no risk, because today, somebody could build the same amount of high-density residential units under the mixed use as they could under high-density residential. There's no, there's no change to what's allowable if someone were to pursue high-density residential.
Understood, thank you very much.
Yes.
At this point, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Howden?
Very quick, does the special use permit transfer to a new owner?
Yes, it runs with the lane.
Then, I guess I just would request clarity on what I mentioned earlier. If this was in the plan, 2030 plan, to be medium-density, that's what the proposal was. Why, I just, why are we putting, why was it put to high-density when there's residential in the area? And why are we wanting to spot zone?
So, we're, we're not spot zoning, it's adjacent to a large area to the east that's high-density residential. So, it's a continuation of that district.
Okay, well, I guess I, I'm, I guess I'm just really concerned, because there's so much infringement upon single-family residential. And I, I guess it, it doesn't make sense to zone it, the, um, to rezone it if it was to be the medium-density. Why it was brought in as high-density when everything on the, um, side of it's high, I mean, mixed use right now too? So...
I would say that mixed use is a graduation between commercial and residential, if you're arguing borders adjacent to arterial, arterial or streets. And, uh, so, the, the highest and best use of the land is when it develops. And for this particular owner, this person owns the land, and they're going to develop it to, in their opinion, the highest and best use to make it economically productive, which is our responsibility too, for orderly development. He's, he's kinda caught up in the code. I suppose he could leave it as, uh, uh, you know, medium-density and go to the Board of Adjustments and try to get a Board of Adjustment appeal, uh, to do that. That would be the only other way that I would see that he could do it without complying to our code.
I just wanna be clear that the applicant has not requested medium-density residential.
No, the applicant requested high-density residential.
That is correct.
Uh-huh.
Medium-density residential would be considered spot zoning, because it's not anywhere near this property.
Yeah. Yes, would you like to come up and-
Yes.
Say your name and address, please?
My name's Terry Whalen, I live at 398 Blue Meadows Road, just probably a couple hundred feet from that property.
Okay.
And I'm facing. And what I'm worried about, like, like we're all trying to discuss here, if, if something changes somewhere along the line, our road can't handle any more traffic than what we get now, the condos and the timeshare. It's crazy, and the park, and the hotel across the street from us, which was supposed to have a, this comes down to what, it was supposed to have a buffer. I have six trees, and you hear all the noise, plus a great big chill. I have six trees, and you hear all the noise, plus a great big generator plant that pops on at any time. And what I'm worried about other down the road, that address part is on the Blue Meadows. I'd rather it be on the four lane on the other side. And is there a way that we could put a, a wall, a buffer, or some type of something along there to stop the problem of what I have now?
Mr. Chairperson, if I may?
Please, we hear Mr. Whalen's request. Can you respond?
Absolutely. So, so absolutely, the addressing is something that staff always evaluates when these properties come to development. And they have plans that they submit to the city. That is something that staff will review and make that determination. I, I'm not gonna sit here and guarantee, but it makes logical sense, I would think, and wise business owner would fully appreciate having their property accessible from Falls Parkway versus Blue Meadows Road. Just simply knowing that he's gonna have people with moving trucks coming in and out, people with RVs and boats and, you know, those types of things. So I, again, I don't wanna guarantee anything on the applicant's sake, but just to remind the commission and the public that, again, if that use were to continue, it would require a special use permit. And these would all be great points to be brought up during that conversation to ensure that there is no negative effect on any adjacent property and make sure it's oriented the right direction, that landscaping is addressed, that all of your concerns that you, you have are addressed by this.
Like Brian was talking about, the eighteen whalers are the ones that took out my corner and my landscaping and everything else. And while just walking down the road, the other day, I just got a, a car past me and another car passed, and I had to jump off into weeds and everything because they're hanging over the road. And between walking down there and coming back, forty-one cars went by me. This is residential. And you're going, "Holy cow," you know? We, we really don't need anything here. I don't, I have a business. I don't know, I'm just a country store out there on Red. I'm not against business. I'm all for anybody building anything, but just abide by the lines and make sure that you have a little consideration for the people that live in houses when you're putting a business, you know, right next to them. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic? Hearing none, then Chair would entertain a motion regarding the request for high-density residential zoning for property located at 705 Blue Meadows Road. And I'm trying to find my actual resolution and get my computer to work. It would be resolution number Z... Yep, zero-two-one-dash-six. Chair would entertain a motion regarding this application.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make that motion.
Make the motion to approve resolutions seven-zero-two-one-dash-six.
Correct.
We have a motion on the floor for approval of this resolution. Do I hear a second? I hear no second. In that case, I believe, if we don't get a second, then this motion is going to die for a lack of a second.
So, so you're correct. So essentially, the planning commission would be recommending denial of this item to its advisory board, and it would go on to the Board of Aldermen.
Okay. Let the report state that the application was denied due to a lack of a second.
Definitely do second.
Can I make a point? I, I was noticing in our training session, I didn't realize that when we make a recommendation and the aldermen go against it, they have to have a two-thirds vote. Is that correct, Mr. Counsel?
That is, and what's unique about the City of Branson is in order to pass an ordinance, two-thirds is the vote, so four of six.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a, it, it doesn't matter in the City of Branson. In other jurisdictions, it does. Because in order for a bill to become an ordinance, you need a majority of elected members of the Board of Aldermen. A majority, in our case, is four members. So we always have to have four to vote, four of six is two-thirds.
Yep. Disappointed. I didn't realize, I hadn't paid attention to that. Just a simple majority if they go with us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I just wanted to make a quick comment about it. From my own perspective, it's not that I'm vehemently against what the applicant is trying to do by any means. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I think it would have been just really helpful to have the applicant here to be able to answer some of these questions. And especially some of the concerns that was raised by the public. So I would imagine at the next opportunity, when it goes before the Board of Aldermen, that the applicant will be there to be able to address those questions.
And you always have the opportunity to postpone an item as well. Is that the next?
Too, too late?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know.
Yeah.
I'm just sharing for next time.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Commissioner Howden.
Thank you, sir. I would like to ask one thing in relation to what Commissioner Boyd brought up since we're getting into the training section, section of that. What if it was Attorney Lebeck? What if it was three to three and the mayor broke the tie? Four out of seven is fifty-seven point one percent. Does that apply?
It's a majority of the elected members of the board. The mayor is only a seated member of the board for purposes of breaking the tie. So that bill would, that up, in that case, it would not mean the two-thirds. Again, I'd have to give that some more thought, but just off the cuff, I think that's where we are.
All right, in that case, we are ready to, excuse me.
I jumped again, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And this is drawn as well. So our fourth item, the next item on the agenda, Mr. Chair, was actually to talk about the proposed meetings to change in October and November.
Yes, we would like to adjust the meeting dates so that we can have staff support for our meeting in both October and November. And tell us about the, I have an hard time getting my computer to come up here, Joel.
Yes.
Okay, here it is. So the Planning Commission meeting, we're requesting approval of this commission to change the date of the October 5 and November 2 Planning Commission meetings to the following, basically, two days later on Thursdays. That would be from October 5 to October 7, and from November, November 2 to November 4. And so Chair would request a, that we briefly look at your calendars, and I would request approval for that change.
Right now?
Mm-hmm. We have to change meeting dates in advance. Thank you.
All second.
We have a motion and a second that we will make those meeting dates change so we can have a full complement of staff here to lead us through it. Any other comments by our commissioners? Yes?
Yes, sir. It's difficult for me, I'm just one commissioner, I understand that. It would be easier if it was one date. I, but as far as for security of our quorums, because I don't know that I'll be able to make it on Thursdays, I will be a no-vote on this. But that's just myself as one commissioner.
Okay. So we might have an issue with Commissioner Howden attending on those two dates. Any other comments? All right, in that case, let's have a roll call vote to change our dates as needed.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you.
Vote's now open. Commissioner Stubb?
Yes.
Commissioner Howden?
No.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairperson Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Denham?
Yes.
Vote's not closed. Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Now, I think it's time for the annual planning or the planning training session, please, Joel. Are you leading us off on this?
So I, I'm just gonna make note, I'm actually gonna hand it off to Attorney Lebeck.
Okay.
We're both gonna be kinda going through this together with you all. And as we mentioned in our study session this evening, it's really meant to be an overview, kinda training, and we'll have the opportunity to go in more depth if we need to on any of the topics. But by all means, if you have a question or a comment, please stop us and let's have a conversation about it as opposed to wait until the end.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Chair?
Yes, you, you may ask a question. This is now an informal training session, so, so we're gonna open the floor to whoever has to, has a question.
How long is this supposed to take? Not to be rude sounding, but I'm just curious, like, what your projected time is, Chris?
Probably no longer than thirty minutes. It's just gonna be a tech tone. You need a break?
No, I don't need a break necessarily. I'm just curious, like, just that the hour is getting late. And I don't know, since we had some members that wanted to attend but were unable to attend tonight, would you, would anybody be open to postponing this so we could maybe to another time? So that we could just get everybody all together and it'd be more efficient for staff and...
It's entirely up to you all. We, we do at your pleasure.
I'm just throwing it out there, if you guys feel like that. It's pretty, it's pretty late, isn't it?
We would just need a motion and a second and a vote and a small round of applause.
Yeah, that's okay for me, I got it.
Okay. So I'd like to move to postpone. And it doesn't necessarily have to be part of a regular meeting, does it? I mean, that's probably more convenient, but...
Well, because of attendance, it probably should be. I would, I would prefer to have it organized as a part of a regular meeting, just like we intended to do it today.
Okay.
But I would prefer to have full attendance if we can get it.
Yeah.
Although Marshall, who's a veteran commissioner, if he's unable to attend on one of the dates forward, which I don't know that, I'm assuming we would do that.
I'll make it work.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion.
You, you don't need, in my opinion, you don't need the training as much as the newer members, but it's always good for us to have the training, and I would appreciate it if you were here.
Yes.
I think you would add to the meeting.
So is this just gonna, you wanna roll up to the next motion, you put on the next agenda?
Does the next agenda look pretty happy or does it look pretty decent?
So at this point, it's, it's two, two vacation, two street vacations and a P D amendment. It's, it's always hard to tell.
It is, isn't it?
I've, I've given up on guessing how long it is.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to move it to our next planned meeting.
We have a motion on the floor to reschedule our training session. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. And so we have a motion and a second. In thinking about the, the use of time, if it's thirty minutes, Attorney Lebeck, are you pretty sure thirty minutes?
Yeah, just to kinda give everybody an idea, this is an extremely high-level training.
Yeah.
The suggestion was made at our last study session that it would be nice to have some sort of kind of onboarding. So the idea here is just to give you the very high-level principles of planning and zoning, how did the authority venture formed under, the rules that this, this commission operates under. So again, very high level, not trying to get in the weeds on this. So we do wanna kinda restrict it to thirty minutes and look to the chair to tell us if we need to come back at a later time for what I would call pinpoint training on a specific topic.
Very well, I, I can, I can concur with your approach. I was just wondering if we could make use of the study session.
Again, if that's your overall preference, the disadvantage is, you know, we do it across all, and we don't have it recorded. You know, that's always a benefit of commissioners is they're unable to attend the meeting as well. But we're, we're happy to entertain and do it however you wish.
We can fit it in a study session.
Yeah.
We could, what about having the study session here and just rolling it that way? We could have it in this chamber.
Yeah, would that, Chad, could we do that?
Sure. If you all would like some additional time, just so we're not up against the seven o'clock meeting, we could obviously move the study session up to even six o'clock.
Well, either that or we can start our meeting late if we happen to run over. You know, accidentally start ten minutes late.
The tough part about that is with our, with our advertising requirements, the meeting starts at seven, and if we have the public coming to the meetings, just good hate to have any delays.
All right.
Our recommendation would be to move the meeting time up as opposed to...
Okay. Okay, well, maybe...
Or you could, you know, pause that conversation and finish it over here.
Yeah, well, why don't we just plan on starting properly at six-thirty like we typically try to do?
Thank you.
And, and end at seven, and then we'll take it up again later for those pinpoint issues that Attorney Lebeck might wanna delve into more deeply. So we have a motion and a second to postpone to date forward. Next meeting or the following. And so let's do a roll call vote.
Thank you, Chairperson, I'll vote. Commissioner Stubb?
Yes.
Commissioner Howden?
Yes.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairperson Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Denham?
Yes.
Vote's not closed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And so do any of the commissioners wanna have any? I sense that Commissioner Howden has a report.
Yes, very brief. It's been brought up in the past by some of the people that were actually here tonight that some of the titles to our agenda items could have a little bit more detail on them. I don't know what the legality of that is. I don't know exactly how these are put together, if they have to follow an exact template. But if that is the case, I would like some discussion on that, just so it can kinda bring me a breath of exactly how these titles are formulated. And if there is a little bit of leeway there where we can put a little bit more detail into the titles, I think that would be really good for community transparency.
Thank you, I'm sure staff heard that. Any other reports? Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a second? Commissioner Stubb, do we do a roll call vote or we just get up and leave? Just go?
No, we'll move.
Okay, we'll move.
Vote's now open. Commissioner Stubb?
Yes.
Commissioner Howden?
Yes.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairperson Davis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Denham?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.